Very good, thank you. All right, everybody ready? All right. Well, good evening and welcome to the Federal Way City Council meeting for July 5th, 2022. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, welcome everyone. It's great to see you, and we'll have a great council meeting tonight. I wanted to let everybody know, we're informing the public right now, it is anticipated that the council will postpone the public hearing to August 9th related to Item 8. That's related to the development of the former Bally's property. I think they're looking at other things. So, I want to make sure that if anybody is here about that, that we want to let you know right off the bat that it's anticipated that we're going to be doing that. We're going to have public hearings, and we're going to do everything by the book, but we just want to make sure that you know that. And, in fact, let's see here, that's Item 8. Is there a motion to address that now? Just to clean up the -- Councilmember Dovi?
Yes, Mayor Farrell, I would move to postpone the 2021 Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Development Agreement public hearing to August 9th, 2022 regular council meeting.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's been a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the matter passed unanimously. And we, just in case anybody was here for that, we wanted to make sure you told, told you upfront, so you would know that. And, let's see here. All right, Mayor's emerging issues and report. We've got the fireworks enforcement update from Deputy Chief Kyle Sumter. Chief?
Good evening. It's my pleasure to be with you again to talk about how the fireworks went this season. Typically, we look at June 30th through July 5th. Obviously, we're not finished with today, so the numbers aren't exactly going to be comparable, but we'll take a look at them anyway. You may recall that at our last council meeting, I invited people of Federal Way, our constituents, to contact me ahead of July 4th if they have a chronically violating neighbor, and we would send police officers to knock on their door and ask for compliance. And in the previous two years that I have made that offer, I've got zero requests, but this year we had two, and we sent officer friendlies out and had a knock on the door, and I just haven't had a chance yet to follow up with those constituents and find out what the impact was, but it seems to be a little bit less in those neighborhoods than previously. So, we'll do the same thing again next year, and we would much rather knock on a door and prevent it than show up and take away the fireworks and issue a $300 ticket and make the children cry and everything else. Prevention is our preference. The fire department yesterday, obviously, the Fourth of July is a very busy day for public safety typically, and that includes the fire department. On a typical day, not the Fourth of July, they average approximately 60 total incidents. Yesterday, they experienced exactly 60 total incidents. So, for a Fourth of July, that is atypical for the fire department. And of those 60, only six were attributable to fireworks. No major structure fires, they had a few brush fires. The most serious one was a dumpster fire at Federal Way High School that scorched part of the building. And, that's atypical for the Fourth of July in the fire department. Let's look at the police activity then. CFS is Calls for Service. If we look at the previous four years, we can see how many total calls for service the police department had, and of those, how many were fireworks related. So, if we just look at last year, 189 total fireworks complaints came into the police department. This year, only 82. Now, that's strange, because if you looked around the city, especially between the peak neighborhood showtime of 10:00 PM to midnight, there seemed to be quite a bit going on, but we only received 82 total complaints this year on the Fourth of July. And if we look at July, I mean, June 30th through July 5th, you can see last year's number was 254 total fireworks complaints for that six-day period. This year, through 1:00 PM today, less than half. Very big differences in terms of numbers this year. And so, the fire department experienced it, we experienced it as well with these low numbers. Our enforcement numbers are going to be in the single digits. I don't have the final count yet, but that'll be the lowest we've had in the previous few years. And, what discussion would you like to have?
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you. I think our outreach efforts are very, are working, and I think it's very important that, you know, that we partner with our, you know, with our neighbors to make sure. So, congratulations on the numbers. I will tell you that, you know, on, you know, we were fortunate, the night before the Fourth of July, we had a good rain.
That helped a lot.
It did, and I think that was important. On the Friday, in my neighborhood, somebody had said, "I heard a couple of loud booms," and I'm not, I'm not going to tell the whole story, I promise, Jack. But, I can tell you, around the corner from where I live, some bushes actually went up pretty fast, and the fire department was called out. A couple of, I had heard a really loud couple of booms, and around the corner, so when I, when I ran around the corner, the flames were like eight, nine feet tall, and they would have fully involved the, some neighbors helped putting that out, so.
Yeah, you compare that weather, which was hot and sunny.
Yeah.
With, yeah, the rain that we got on Sunday, and the fire department, Assistant Chief was in our command post with us yesterday, and he was grateful for that rain as well. Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of neighbors helped, and I, and the fire, the fire department was there very fast, so that's, that's important.
I, I would simply like to say, if anybody has any footage, a fireman Jim out in his shorts, barefooted, putting out a fire, I'd like to see it.
Not how I thought I was going to spend my Friday. Council President?
I, I would like to say thank you to all of you for the police. We all felt safe at the park. Staff did a wonderful job. We would have, really have been nice if we had artificial turf on, on, on the grass. But, it was wonderful to see all the families out and having fun in a safe manner and just running around, and I had somebody coming through to steal Tootsie Rolls from my little booth area multiple times. I think he's going to be sick last night. But, we, we had, we had a lot of really nice people that came to the park, and really nice people that put the event on. Vendors were wonderful, couldn't have been a nicer event.
All right, I think we'll hear from John Hutton next about that event specifically. Yeah, it went very well. From a police perspective, probably the best ever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, Council, excuse me, Deputy Mayor.
Well, thank you, Mayor, for defending your neighborhood. I heard all about it, thank you. Was anyone fined for having fireworks?
Yes, we issued some tickets.
So, you'll be able to tell us the numbers later?
Yeah, I just don't have the total yet, but it's going to be lower than the previous couple of years.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Councilmember Norton, did I see your light on?
Nope.
Okay, all right. All right, very good. And, you, you guys were right, there was probably about mid-evening, I'd say maybe, it had to be around 8:00 o'clock maybe, where we got that real scary five minutes where we had a missing six-year-old.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was really, the, the band stopped, and then, and, but I have to tell you, I, you know, I saw our bike officers, our foot patrol officers, and they were all over, and within minutes, we were able to, the police were able to locate the missing six-year-old.
Mayor, I wish you, it was a Norman Rockwell picture. I wish I had my camera, when the officer who found her was holding her by the hand, and she was skipping along with him. She didn't even know she was missing, and there he is, walking her to mom at the command post. I wish I could have captured that moment. It made my week.
And, it was, it was a moment, though, when we, when, you know, the, the people performing, remember that, that, the people performing, like we have a myth, you know?
Yeah.
So, that was great, great job.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, all right, and now, we've got the Red, White &amp; Blues Festival report, Parks Director John Hutton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you very much. I want to thank you all for attending yesterday. It was a fabulous event, as Council President mentioned and Kyle alluded to. I couldn't agree more with Kyle that it was a fantastic show, probably the very best. We were excited about a lot of things. Number one, we're back at it after a two-year layoff due to COVID. We're doing what we were born to do, is get people together, and just can't thank everybody enough. We had a tremendous amount of support from our police department, our fire department, local organizations that sponsored, all of the vendors. Everybody had a good time. There were zero incidents, as Deputy Chief mentioned. It was just a fantastic show. The fireworks were great, the music was great, the sound system was new and improved, and it was pretty fantastic. If you couldn't hear it, you need to get to an audiologist, because it was loud. And it was perfect. They were, they were really, really good bands this year. Lot of fun, lot of diversity within the music, everything from reggae to classic rock and roll. We had Rock and Roll Hall of Famers on site. It was absolutely a terrific show, and, and hats off to our staff. They worked their tails off, our, down to our day camp staff, who were doing children's entertainment from start to finish, worked hard. If you went by the park today, you would swear you're having an out-of-body experience, because it looks like it didn't happen. We were out of there at 1:45 in the morning, with the stage down and put away, and the park is clean as a whistle. We could have played ballgames at 9:00 o'clock this morning. So, very excited and happy to be back at it. And with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
You stayed till the very end, right, John?
As far as you know, sir, yeah.
That's the right answer. Council President?
Oh, I, I just want to say one very important thing that everybody always forgets, but those porta-potties were very clean. Tell them thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good.
Very good. Councilmember Walsh?
And I would like to say, I, I think it was the day camp staff, I mean, them going around, you know, right before the fireworks and stuff, picking up trash and everything. I, I've never seen that many people in a park with that little litter around while it was going on. And I think that, that the staff keeping stuff picked up helped entice people to not litter to begin with.
I agree.
And so, it, I, I've got to commend the Parks Department and that day camp staff. I mean, there was, there were some, some energetic kids that were running around picking up every drop of trash.
They were, they were still running around at 11:30, all us old people, we were kind of marveling, I wish they had that energy now, so.
Councilmember Sephardoson?
Yeah, thank you so much. It was a great event also. Do you know, do you have a rough idea about how many people were there, because it was packed?
It felt like a good crowd to me. I was, I stayed down near the stage a lot, and so I didn't get the opportunity to go up. I may defer to, to our chief or deputy chief, if they have a, a good guess, and feel free to guess, hi, Andy, so.
I'm going to guess in the range of maybe 15,000 people, 15,000, 16,000.
I'd say that's pretty accurate. And then, you know, there's so many people outside on the BPA trail and in the parking lots, and over at the mall, and over by Scoreboard Pub, there's just a ton of people just to plop a lawn chair down and, and watch. There's so many great viewing spots for it, so. It, it felt like a really good crowd. Typically, when it falls on a Monday, we do really well, because people are back in town, back to work tomorrow, so they come to the show, whereas if it falls on a Saturday, sometimes they go out of town and go camping or whatever, so.
And one thing I wanted to add is, for the police department, traffic flow was incredible.
They did a fabulous job. I, I can tell you how good they did on that, and exiting everybody from the north gate to the north, and everybody from the south gate. That parking lot, it was full, and it was empty in, in like, what felt like five minutes. It was, they did a great job, so.
Yeah, I've never been able to leave the parking lot that, that quickly. It, it was really, I, you know, it was surprising. Normally, you know, they normally fill up both lanes, and it's really kind of a traffic jam. Whatever they did, worked.
They've, they've got a, down to a science now, and it's, it's almost perfect, so.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Arts Commission and Parks Commission for being there. They are volunteers, and they spent their whole evening there, and, and the Arts Commission, having been an Arts Commissioner, they have to do a lot of planning to get there with the arts and crafts, and getting the supplies and stuff, so that was awes- awesome, and they made me a princess thing, so. But, what was my question? Well, anyway, I, oh, Miles for MISO, can you talk about that? Because that was awesome to have that back again, and there were a lot of really good runners this year.
There were, we're excited about that. That's something that, how we give back, we run a race every Fourth of July. It started about, gosh, must have been 10 or 15 years ago.
12 years ago.
12 years ago?
Yeah.
Thank you.
We found it out yesterday.
Yeah, I was, I was in the range of 10 to 15, so there, so 12 years ago, and we donate all the proceeds back to Miles for MISO Thelioma, and it's really cool. A lot of local ladies who lost their, their husbands to MISO helped us get that off the ground many years ago, and we're tireless volunteers, and still some of them are. And, we're excited about that. We had 150 runners. We were able to keep it going through COVID. We did it virtually, and so people just would register, make a donation to Miles for MISO, and then report their runtimes, and we still got prizes donated. We had great sponsors, gave great prizes away, and 150 people, runners, or, or virtual, but it was over 100 in person at the community center that morning, and, and it was a great run. It was perfect weather for a run, it was kind of cool early in the morning, and, so yeah, Miles for MISO is a great program, we're very proud of that, so.
And Doug Nelson came back to lead it.
Doug did, he rode, he rode his bike in from his house, and then led the race on his bicycle, and then turned around and rode home, so. Yeah, Doug can't get away, as much as he tries, so.
It was good to see him, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. John, can you tell us about the movies in the park?
Movies in the park are coming up. The first one is on the 23rd, and I did not bring my sheet up here, I believe it's Encanto?
It is.
That's one in a row, right? And then we have a second one in August, can you help me with that date?
Jungle Cruise.
Jungle Cruise, and that one is August?
13.
August 13th. These are great movies in the park, they're free, they're at Town Square Park. Highly encourage you to come out, bring the family, they're always family-friendly movie. It's a lot of fun, a big inflatable screen, gigantic screen, great sound system. You will have fun, and it's good for the whole family, everybody will have a good time. We'd love to have you come out. It'll be, you'll have a good time if you come.
And now, because we're, we're in chairs this time, right? We didn't have to do the, we don't have to do the cars.
Yes, we are in person, yeah. In person, blankets, lawn chairs, anything you'd like.
Doing popcorn again?
I believe we're doing popcorn, yeah.
Very good, yeah, exactly.
Are we doing popcorn?
We're doing it, very, exactly, yeah, exactly. So, free popcorn, free movie, you know, it's, it's great, yeah. Okay, yeah.
Well, thank you again to everybody for all your support. We're proud of that event, and we will be back next year, bigger and better.
Very good, all right, thank you very much. Okay, recent community events, we had the Chamber Quarterly Update on June 15th, we had the Juneteenth Flag Raising, and all the events associated with June 10th. We did the Flag Raising on Friday, the 17th. There were events and tables at the, at the market, Federal Way Farmers Market at the Commons, and then they had events on actual Juneteenth, on the, on, first time it was a statewide holiday, a national holiday. Okay, upcoming, upcoming events, we've got National Night Out on Tuesday, August 4th, and we've permanently changed the date of our first meeting in August to accommodate National Night Out, and we never, we have, as a matter of rule now, we don't have a second meeting in August, and people take holidays. So, the one and only council meeting scheduled for August is August 9th, and that'll be at the regular time right here. All right, now, most important part of the evening, when we hear from you, our public comment, everybody knows the rules. When you get the yellow, that means you've got 30 seconds left, and then red, it means please stop. If you're, if you're mid-sentence, you can finish your sentence, but let's, let's try to stay on time, and everybody knows the rules. So, with that, we've got Dave Harrelson and Greg McCann right up, and then Jan Barber after that. Oh, yeah, thank you, thank you, and I keep forgetting, would you please just say the, the city that you reside in?
First of all, Mayor, I didn't see you out in our neighborhood saving me from fire. I'm sure I didn't start it, so. I lived down the street from the mayor, so I didn't start it, I'm sorry.
You were the other direction.
Good. So, yeah, good evening, Mayor Farrell, President, Council President Kochmer, and Deputy Mayor Honda, and the rest of the council. I am Dave Harrelson, I've been a resident of this city for 35 years, I can't hardly believe it's been that long. I spent too much time going to Olympia and just forgot where I live. But I'm here on, tonight, with Greg McCann on behalf of the Federal Way Public Market. We've been working hard on this for the, for the past couple of years, and I know we've talked to a lot of you, but we know that there's some decisions that you have coming up around things like Recovery Act funds and other funds, and there's a lot of conversations we've been having with Keith around the planning for the downtown, and, and all the different moving parts that are happening there. So, we're here tonight, I think, just to kind of refresh and become present for you, so that you can keep in mind exactly why we're going about this, and why we think this will benefit the city. Because I think as time has gone on, we've learned a lot of lessons from what our understanding of what a public market was, and what it can do from where we are now. So first, let me start with our vision, and it's to establish a community hub to help our city grow as a vibrant and economically prosperous place to live, work, play, and worship. And we would do this by fostering economic development and developing, although we have a community center, really another, a year-round community gathering place. And we, we were at the Red, White &amp; Blues Festival yesterday, and we heard a lot about, we want a place to gather. It's wonderful to have it during the summer in the park, but we want a place year-round that we can do this. So, when I, when I first started work, as I said before, when I started working on this, I thought of public markets, because I'd visited PIBUS, as just another retail space. And what I've learned about over time is that it's much more than that. It, it really is an experiential place. It's, it's a, a place where it really is a tourist attraction, because it is not just retail, it's also performances and a variety of things that are, that are going on. And, and when you attract tourists into the area, you also attract shoppers and visitors from other, from communities around the area that may have no other reason to come to Federal Way to spend their time and their money. So, it is something that if you run it properly, you can get people to come here and spend their money, which is important, both in terms of the tax base, to be able to take care of our city, but also in terms of the businesses in, in the community. So, so public markets are, are really renowned for their ability to do economic development. Public markets only sell local products, they're not about chains, so the money that's spent here stays here. When people visit here, they spend, or when people visit malls and public markets, they spend more time and money in public markets, because they go into malls to shop, but they come to a public market in order to be able to experience the sights, sense, sight, sounds, and smells of the, of the, of the market. The other thing we were incorporating into this is a business incubator, and it's the idea of, of being able to foster small businesses to start, to, to learn how to run small businesses, launch from there, and launch their business from, from the market. Just one more comment, first time out. So, beyond this, the whole business part of this, and, and supporting economic development, is really the notion of, of having a central gathering place for, for our residents to come together, to gather, shop, be entertained, and, and to celebrate. We're facing a lot of challenges as we move forward, and it'd be great to have a place to come together, so tonight, we're asking you if you can keep us in mind as you're making decisions into the future. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Dave. All right, now Greg McCann.
Thank you, Mayor, Council President, Deputy Mayor, and Council members. As Dave said, my name is Greg McCann, I've lived in Federal Way about 25 years now. In fact, raised my family here, my daughter just graduated from Federal Way High School, and she's off to Western Washington in the fall. So, I'm committed to making my city and my home a better place. Our board, the Federal Way Public Market Board, has done a lot of community outreach over the last two years about the market. We've talked to each one of you about the market, and we had a lot of questions from folks about the differences between public markets and farmers' markets, where it would be built, how much it would cost, et cetera. Most notably, though, every person, every single person, thought the market would be a great idea and a tremendous value for our community. Recently, we've driven a lot of traffic to the Engage Federal Way site, and for the voting on the TC3 and what should be done with it. Last I saw, a public market was about 350 votes, green space, about 150, and other items, about 50 votes or less. So, we've got a tremendous amount of public support there. And as Dave said, we were out at the Red, White &amp; Blues yesterday, we got over 100 surveys filled, dozens of really great conversations with folks about the market and what it means to us. And, well, also, this summer, we'll be at the Quanta Salmon Bake and the Lions Car Show as well, so we're really continuing to get our message out. And through the summer and fall, we'll be engaging in, with more diverse community groups, engaging with that leadership in particular, to keep building the broad-based support that we need. We also have a fiscal sponsor now, so we're able to raise funds, and we'll begin fundraising and seeking grants as we get our 501(c)(3) status approved, fingers crossed, by the IRS. Community support is foundational for a public market, but to go any further, we need to complete a feasibility study and site analysis. So, we really need to have that hard data to prove that the market can succeed here in Federal Way based on the demographic and economic realities of our city and surrounding area. So, gauging community support is part of that study. A site analysis will tell us where the market would work best, and public markets are really not like regular retail, you can't just use any contractor to do your study, you really need someone who has expertise in a public market. One consultant that we've worked with said that about a third of his studies end up recommending against public markets, so it's not like a mill where people are just trying to get money to, to sell you an idea. And once that feasibility study comes in, we would not proceed further without, unless these studies told us we had a really solid chance of having a financially self-sustaining market. We wouldn't want to waste our city's time or money chasing a dream that couldn't be a reality. Once these two studies are done, you know, next would be to get the business plan, market design, so roadmap to success, and from there, we move on to construction remodeling, et cetera. And the goal really is to be financially sustainable within five years, and we're really, would love to have the market up and running about the time that the 320th Light Rail Station opens. Thank you for your time, happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks. All right, Jan Barber, and then Betty Taylor, and then Carolyn Davis.
Well, hello, and I would like to add something to the earlier comments about what all happened in June. We, we, the Federal Way Lions Club, with the support of the council and the city, presented a Make Music Federal Way, and that was on June 21st. Just, it could be added next year, perhaps. I have lived here probably 15 years, and in October, I submitted a petition with 40 and more, more than 40 signatures, and one of my neighbors submitted the same petition with about 25 signatures. We are very interested in the outcome of the multifamily rezoning request that's going into place for what used to be Bally's, six acres. We have listened to many ideas and tried to share with a fairly open mind what we're learning. The part I wanted to speak about today is the parking, the traffic flow, and the fact that there are three different schools that have school buses running through between Colonial Forest and the Bally's lot. And with the additional estimated 330 units that would be filled, we are concerned about traffic. Right now, it, it's reasonable, and people can get by. Off-street traffic, off-street parking, traffic flow, and the school buses are some of our concerns, and we have had an increase in vandalism within Colonial Forest. Just last night, a car was broken into. This is something we're all aware of, and we're worried about what would happen if we had a large increase in the population right across the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan, and congratulations on the successful event, thank you. It'll be on next time, for sure. As soon as you got up, I thought, I thought the same thing. I thought, uh-oh. All right, Betty Taylor, and then Carolyn Davis, Jeffrey Tancredi, and Ken Blevins.
Good evening. My name is Betty Taylor, and I've resided in Federal Way for over 20 years. But I come before you in behalf, on behalf of a lot of people. I had a conversation with my manager at my apartment complex. She approached me, and, and she said, "Well, Betty, how do we go about getting speed bumps in our neighborhood?" And I said, "Well." I told her that you could take your ideals to the city council, and they listen, and then we'll go from there. So, and she was supposed to be coming today, but she didn't, but I'm here to represent. Okay, so I'm going to be talking about a Okay, so I'm going to be talking about speed bumps. And, um, speed bumps, the pro of speed bumps, there are, speed bumps may slow traffic and discourage traffic on residential streets. The con is, free, speed bumps may cause serious accidents and increase the city's liability for those accidents. Speed bumps slow emergency vehicles and equipment. So we, the undersigned residents of Federal Way, of Traditions at Federal Way, at 31701 Pete Monrover Way South, request speed bumps to be installed on our block. For the last year and a half, residents have noticed with concern an increased speed at which vehicles are passing on the street. Indeed, there could have been five or more missed accidents that could have been fatal to our seniors who reside at the apartment complex. So, um, we have a petition, and so I brought it with me, so I, I, this is a petition to install speed bumps. So, and we have, I have about, right here with me right now, I think I have like about 30 signatures, but I could get more. But, um, we are requesting speed bumps because, um, and it's, it's the street that, I mean, so for those of you have, who have been to Traditions, there's like a, a street, okay? You go to Pete Monrover, but then there's a street you turn up. And so the street you turn up into the apartment area, that's where cars are like speeding, they're going at high, I mean, they're going too fast. And we have residents coming out of the apartment complex, crossing the street, and, and barely getting hit by cars. So I don't know what we have to do to make this happen, but if, I need some direction. We need some direction and some peace of mind. So we would like the city to look into this, and please help us.
Very good. Betty, thank you very much. I'll have E.J. Walsh, our Public Works Director, get in contact with you and get those signatures.
Okay, do you want me to give them to him?
He'll, he'll take care of it, right? He'll come see you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, Carolyn Davis, and then Jeffrey Tancredi.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for lending your ear to this. I'm a neighbor to Jan Barber in Colonial Forest. We're all aware of increasing vandalism and problems in Federal Way, and that includes Colonial Forest. I was talking with a member of our board and another neighbor just this evening, and she was speaking how, how much that's increased in the 30 years she's lived here. Asked me to mention that there are several, not only the incidents of vandalism, happening numerous times weekly. One neighbor had someone climb into her window while she was home and left by the door when she was, when she confronted him. Another one had her jewelry stolen while she was gone. Just this week, it was caught on video as one of two men walking down the street, wrenched a slat from our fence, and kicked down the section it came from. And while we can't do much to control these incidents, our contention is that if rezoning goes through for the former Bally's Lot, Bally's Lot, that it be contracted that the housing be for ownership, not rental. We believe that pride of ownership will make it more likely that the majority of our new neighbors will be responsible and help taking care of our neighborhood. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. All right, Jeffrey Tancredi, and then Ken Blevins.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council Members. Good evening, thanks for letting me speak. Full disclosure, yeah, Federal Way resident 25 years. I live in Colonial Forest. I'll speak on that subject in August when they, you know, have that meeting in August. But, yeah, I just wanted to mention that Ken Blevins and I, we went to 356 and Pack Highway recently to look at the, you know, all those trailers that are, that are lined up in there, and then we looked at the encampment behind as you walk down the fence line. So, yeah, we noticed that, that front trailer, just right off the road there, it seems to be one that they, the homeless or drug addicts go into, because we noticed while we were in there checking it out, one of the guys walked out and he sort of locked it, and so they got an arrangement to lock that. But, I mean, most of them were secured, but you can tell there's some vandalism going on in there. So after we walked around and looked at those trailers, then we, then we walked along the fence line, and of course, there's streams, you know, streams back in there, so we talked to the resident, those folks in there in the encampments, and, you know, we said, "You're trespassing, and, you know, this is not good for you, as well as, it's not good for the city." I don't know if it's private property, but it'd be nice to see the eviction notices served on them because it looks like they're, you know, this is the most beautiful, I, I grew up in the East Coast, and this is such a beautiful part of the country with all these evergreens. So it's, it's just not good for them, they're trespassing, they're drug addicts, they need to be into treatment so they can get well, so they can become functioning members of society and not languishing, you know, in somebody's backyard or... So anyway, yeah, so it'd be great to have them, you know, served and get them out of there and get them into a treatment facility so that we can, they can move on with their lives.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
That's it. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, Ken Blevins.
Hello, thanks a lot. 50-year resident of Federal Way, Ken Blevins. Wanted to, there's a lot of subjects that just kind of came to mind, so that, that encampment he's talking about, some of it's on a property there. There were over a dozen of those trailers that were vandalized, and people are living in them. I guess the police officer went by there and said there weren't so many, but I think he didn't go as, into it like we did. And they're, they broke the fence going into Federal Way property next door, and there's three camps in there. So they're going between them and doing drugs and selling drugs and all that kind of stuff. And I don't think City of Federal Way wants to be a part of selling drugs. So let's get this thing taken care of, please. Another thing, the cart issue, it all comes down to these people being dropped off in our city and being able to take all their stuff and wheeling down into our parks of our green spaces and so on, and building encampments, and doing drugs, selling drugs, more drug dealers coming into town and so on. And we got this, this King County hotel that was bought, that we're, they're going to end up putting drug addicts in there, not actually require help from them, not require them to get off the drugs and so on. And so I hope that we actually can get people into the state legislature that'll make good laws that will have a better plan for, for our city so that we can use these hotels that already been bought, turn them into facilities for these people to move into, have clinics below where they're basically, stay there for two years and get clean and get healthy and so on, and come back to society. When it comes to the area, they're talking about Colonial Forest, I was just called over there today by just kind of a word of mouth and so on, the Rain City Coffee owner, a new one, they're having an issue with homeless drug problem over there, and their workers are really scared to go to work. They're having to go there in the morning, and people are there by the door and causing problems. There's garbage in the back, there's garbage by the garbage can. I went over there and talked to the employees, and they really were scared about the, just kind of the environment, and that's what, who's actually probably stealing from these neighborhoods is the drug addicts that are over there, causing problems there. They go over there and they break in your cars and your homes and so on. So it really is spreading into our city really well, and people are starting to find out that it's, it's a bigger problem than, than what's being led on to. And we know that the police department's been dealing with this, it's been hard for them, their laws are against them to actually help these people out, the laws are against them to actually help us out as citizens and businesses. So let's keep on working on it, hopefully we'll get some people into the state legislature that actually work for us and make laws that make our city better. And, but, I ran into a guy behind the dumpster that, one of the troublemakers, he wasn't feeling too well today, he said he's on methadone, and obviously, methadone's not working out for him. But anyways, I appreciate it. Let's please work on this cart issue. We can, it can solve a lot of problems. I don't know where you guys were at with that, I guess it went to committee. Maybe someone can update me on that, I don't know if the committee's already talked about it yet, but if we can get this thing working through, I promise you, I'll help you get to these retailers, get them to do what they need to do to be able to come on board so we can do this thing as a city and, and get these people help and, and take away their, stop enabling them. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
Ken, thank you very much. I was talking to a couple of council members, I think there could be some action or some, some modifications to this, and so I know that there's, there's work being done and discussions being had by the council, and, you know, they set policy, so we'll, we'll be working with them. Also, the Rain City situation, would you please, Chief, I, I see, you know, can you have somebody work with Mr. Blevins while he's here today about the safety situation at Rain City? What time they, can you let them know what time they open? We should have somebody go over there tomorrow to when they, when they show up, we should have an officer presence. People should be able to go to work without being afraid.
The owner will be there at 7:00 a.m., but I appreciate it.
All right. Chief, can you have, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Okay.
You know, Mayor, I'm wondering, if there isn't, you know, I, I'm, I'm not sure where, Ken knows where these people are coming from, but I, I am very worried when light rail comes through, and, you know, when people get on the line, they ride, and they go to the end of the line, and then they get off.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm so, I don't know what we can do to prepare for that, but that's coming up really soon.
Right.
And I, I can just see a proliferation.
Well, I think, you know, we need to work with the chief or Special Operations Unit with Sound Transit, but, you know, hope's not a plan, and so let's, we'll, we'll develop a real plan. I think you're absolutely right, and I think your fears or, or concerns are well-grounded. All right, so Chief, we should probably talk about that and planning and, and work with, and let's have a conversation about that, maybe even have, as we get closer to the op, to the opening of the Sound Transit, you know, either get a briefing from Sound Transit Security and, and talk about, we're going to have 30,000 more people per day in our downtown, so we should, we should have some intentionality about, about how we're planning for that. Councilmember Stephanie Dawson.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for all the hard work that you're doing and for making our city safe. I also want to make sure that your safety is not compromised and that what you're doing is really, you're protected and you're safe. So I just want to say thank you and be safe.
Yeah, thank you, Jeffrey, and thank you, I know that Ken's outside right now. Chief, I know that we sent some folks, probably our Special Operations Unit personnel out to those trailers. Maybe we should let SOU know that there, it sounds like there's renewed activity at those locations? Or do you have new information, or?
No, I don't have any updated, but I know SOU and code enforcement were working on it, but we can certainly get an update.
Very good, all right, thank you. And just share what we've heard tonight from, from Jeffrey and Ken.
Okay, we'll do it.
All right, thank you very much. All right, I don't have any more pink sheets, is there anybody else who'd like to talk? All right, thank you, this is clearly the most important thing we do as a, as a, as a government body. Okay, presentations, we've got an update on the Declaration of Emergency. So right when COVID started, we did some modifications to our emergency rules and, and did one thing in particular, but I'll turn it over to Ryan to talk about that.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Council President, Deputy Mayor and Council. As the mayor mentioned, when COVID first kicked off about two years ago now, a little over two years, March of 2020 is when the proclamation, this proclamation came out, and COVID started a few months before that. We took two actions, well, three actions. One, we modified the city code, and you'll find that now in the Federal Way Revised Code has an emergency management section that's codified. Before that, we had been relying on basically a resolution from the 90s, and it had not been updated for quite a while. So we have pretty good, robust powers now that have been granted to whoever's sitting in the, the mayor's seat should another emergency happen. A part of that also, there were two other proclamations, and I'm here to report back on one of them. In March of 2020, the mayor declared a public emergency related to COVID and granted some authorities to count to the directors of the city to take emergency actions. I tried to summarize this proclamation, and in the end, my summary was basically just reading the proclamation, so I'm going to read the proclamation. I think that's probably the most efficient way to, to convey this. So proclamation rescinding emergency procurement authority. Whereas on March 26, 2020, Mayor Jim Farrell declared a public health emergency due to the outbreak of COVID-19 in King County, and further declared that department directors were authorized to enter into contracts and incur obligations as necessary to protect the health and safety of persons and property and to provide emergency assistance to those impacted by the outbreak. And whereas while COVID-19 continues to impact society in many negative ways, the severe social disruptions caused by mandatory quarantines has lessened, allowing the City of Federal Way to operate more normally. And whereas emergency procurement and contract, contracting are no longer necessary to address the needs of the community when responding to COVID-19-related issues because those needs can be addressed through the normal contracting process, ending with council approval. Therefore, be it proclaimed by Mayor Jim Farrell, Mayor, two mayors in that sentence, of the City of Federal Way, that Section 1, there no longer exists an emergent threat to public safety stemming from the social disruption caused by COVID-19 responses such as mandatory quarantines. City staff are directed to continue to address the impacts of COVID-19 through normal procurement and contracting processes. Section 2, authority granted to department directors to execute emergency procurement and contracting without regard to those procedures required by local and state law is hereby rescinded. Signed, Jim Farrell, Mayor, City of Federal Way, June 27, 2022.
And to clarify, we never really act, we never had to act on any of that, is that right?
And that was going to be my next point, is that we were geared up to maybe need to do that, we didn't really know where the pandemic was headed at that point, but at no point did we ever have to take action to spend money before we came to council for authority because we quickly started having virtual meetings. So in the end, it wasn't necessary, but should there be an earthquake or something that takes out the, our ability to meet, we do have the ability in those emergency, emergency situations to spend money if it's needed upon declaration of the mayor.
Subject to later ratification by council.
Correct.
Right.
That's absolutely important.
All right, Council, are there any questions? Councilmember Nord.
Is it possible that when we do an emergency declaration, that we could have some kind of role, that we could revisit that every 60 to 90 days? You know, I mean, it's been two years, and that's kind of a long time to be in an emergency. I just thought, is that something we could add or think about?
We could. I, I think that we, this was a weird emergency. So I don't think a pandemic is going to be the normal emergency response. Usually, we're talking about earthquakes, windstorms, major events that make our ability to govern compromise. Pandemics, I guess we've done one now, we kind of know if it happens again, better how to respond, but most emergencies are tight events, 30 to 60 days would be a normal turnaround, so that's a fair point. I think it's pretty rare that something would drag out for as long as it hasn't. Frankly, COVID hasn't gone away, we're just, I think, collectively deciding that the emergency part of it has stopped.
So my thinking was that we were just copying what the governor is doing, and he said that when he's done with the COVID emergency, that we're going to have a climate emergency after that. So he's never going to give up his emergency powers, was kind of what he indicated recently. So I was just hoping that we could kind of not do that here at the city, if possible.
Fair, fair point. So, and the mayor brings up the most important part of his emergency authorities, which is any action taken by the mayor has to be ratified by council at the next council meeting.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
We don't have that unfettered sort of situation.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Doby.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment about the emergencies. This was brought up by our mayor, it was time to resend it, and some of the council members, so I think we're in, in good hands that the decision was made, we're not like the state that it goes on forever in Federal Way. We have a, a good decision-making process, and it was brought up, and now we have what we, we deserve, having back to normal with the ability to have an emergency if so deemed necessary.
I wasn't talking about the mayor, I was just, I was talking about the governor.
Oh, yeah, but we, the governor's been elected, and we don't have any say over that, we can only work for Federal Way.
Deputy Mayor Honda.
Thank you. So other cities have been doing this since last summer, this certainly isn't unusual for a city to do this, and I would think most cities aren't going to wait for the governor to resend his emergency powers.
Yeah, that's good. All right. All right, good discussion, everybody, thank you very much. Okay, Ryan, thank you very much. Jeff? All right, now, item six on the agenda with these council committee and regional committee reports, Parks, Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Walsh.
All right, our, our next committee meeting will be a week from today on, on July 12th. Included on the agenda will be a discussion on the shopping cart situation, and just a little bit of an update on that, beginning to- Beginning tomorrow, I have appointments meeting with the GMs so far of Safeway, Costco, Home Depot and Target to discuss the shopping cart situation and work on things that will work for them as well as for the residents of Federal Way. So we have that.
Yeah. Are we allowed to clap? I guess so, exactly, great job, thank you. I'm just teasing, I'm kidding. Land Use and Transportation Committee, Councilmember Doby.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Our next committee meeting will be next Monday, July 11. And we have a very long agenda. Probably the highlight for me on the agenda is we'll be talking about fees and for building in Federal Way with things coming up with downtown in the future and projects. We're going to be talking about impact fees that are imposed by the school district, other fees. And so we get a clear understanding what a developer has to go through. And hopefully, we'll get some good information as we make decisions to make Federal Way a better place to build and grow in.
All right, thank you. Finance, Economic Development, Regional Affairs Committee, otherwise known as Fedrec, Councilmember Hontran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we met on June 28. There are items from item B to G on the consent agenda for your review and approval. You all received information from our finance director regarding the status of our finances. So I don't want to repeat it, but basically, everything looking good, we are in good hands. And at the end of my report, our next meeting is going to be on June 26 at 5:00 PM here. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Logic Tax Advisory Committee, LTAC, that is Councilmember Sephardoson.
Thank you, Mayor. We met in June and reviewed an application, a grant application that we have approved. And it went to Parks Rec, no, Fedrec last week, and so it's on the agenda now for approval. Our next meeting is the second Wednesday, which is the 13th, at 10:00 AM. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor and Regional Committees, you're on.
Thank you. So next, well, actually, yeah, it is next week. The 13th will be the July PIC meeting, and we will be talking about regional committee appointments to EMAC, RTC and the flood control, the Clean Water Plan Guiding Principles, and discussing potential future levies and ballot measures. This once again is on Zoom, and council members are free to attend if they like on Zoom. And we attended AWC last week, council members, Coachmar, Sephardoson and myself. I was on a panel discussion to discuss broadband and internet, internet issues that occurred during COVID. I was able to talk about what Federal Way did during that time. And I'd like to give a big thank you to Thomas, our IT director, for his, his help with that. It was really interesting to listen to what other cities did around the state with their issues that they had with broadband and internet and schools and hospitals and all sorts of things. So I think we actually did pretty well here in Federal Way and in South King County. The other things at AWC at the conference that were highlights for me, there was a session on crisis communication, which was really excellent. And they gave us this handy-dandy little guide. And so before COVID, the last emergency management meeting that I attended, what we were talking about, crisis communication. And if anyone watches the news these days, almost every day, there's some city, some mayor, some police chief talking about the crisis that just happened in their town. But this speaker was really, really good. And if you're not prepared ahead of time, you're not going to be able to really communicate what's going on with your community and with the public. So I learned a lot from him. I also went on a walking tour of the waterfront. So we were in Vancouver, Washington. We were last down there in 2017, and it has changed tremendously since 2017. They, about 18 years ago, got together with some developers, the city, some people from just around the community, and they talked about what they wanted to see in their, on their waterfront, they're right on the river, the Columbia River. And after 17 years, they are now seeing the, you know, the things that they dreamed about. And even during COVID, when things were slowing down, even during a recession, when things slowed down, they were still moving forward. And if, if you didn't get anything from that discussion, you know, we walked for about two hours. It's, you need a plan and you need a vision. And if you don't have that, whatever you want isn't going to happen. We can talk all we want about what we want downtown, what we want in Federal Way, but we need a vision, we need a plan, and we need to know how we're going to get there, and we need to do it right, which takes time. You know, it's not going to happen in two years, it's not going to happen in five years. It's going to take a while to do it right. So if you're ever in Vancouver, Washington, go on the waterfront because it's really amazing what they've done there. They're not done. They have, they still have years left of work down there. But they have, they have buildings up, they have condos going for a million dollars for a very small condo. They have retail, they have businesses moving in. It's what their vision was a long, long time ago. And so I would just say, a vision and a dream and a plan and, and keep working on it and change it as you need to because what your original vision and plan, you're going to have to make changes in it as time, as time goes on. And it's possible, and I know we'll get there. I also wanted to talk about, AWC is offering a Menaceville budgeting and fiscal management workshop. Several years ago, when Ade came as our finance director, all of council attended this workshop. It was down in Tuck Willa that year. This, this year, it's up in Leavenworth. And he attended with us, and we talked, the whole workshop is on our role in developing and implementing the budget. It helps even people who've been on council a while to refresh us on how budgets work, what our role is in it, how policy is determined by the budget, what our goals are as a council and how that translates to the budget. So if anyone is interested in going that, to that on council, it's August 18th and 19th. You'd probably have to get up there on the 17th because the workshop started 8:00 on the 18th. And I would really encourage anyone on council to go. So if you want to go, they're registering now, and there is a limit of how many people they can take. I would, but I would really encourage people to think about going. So that's August 18th and 19th in Leavenworth.
Is the city paying for that?
Yes, the city's paying for it.
Does there a limit to?
There's, they have a limit as to how many people they will have in the workshops, but so far, it's still open. So.
Did you have more than this, or is this yours?
You can keep that.
Oh, great, thank you very much, actually. This is really good, really, really good. Thank you very much, very helpful.
I just have this one, by the way.
Oh, really? Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's actually just reading the, you know, I was listening and reading. But, but it's actually really, really, very good, very, yeah. We, and we are going to, I think we mentioned this at the last meeting. We are going to be having exercises with our Greater Federal Way Emergency Operations Center in the event that there is a shooting at a public location or at a school. Or we're going to be working with our partners to make sure, and we're going to do that before the school year starts to make sure that our city is fully prepared. And I think Chief Sumter was talking about that previously, but I digress.
I have one more.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
So at AWC, I also attended the Education and Training Advisory Committee meeting. And one of the things that I have noticed over the years of going to workshops, even with PTA back in the days when I did PTA, is if someone has a disability, it's often overlooked. And people with disabilities sometimes don't go to a conference because they don't think they're going to be accommodated. We spent some time talking about accommodations for people who have all sorts of disabilities. And I think in the future, we're going to have some help for those people. So that the walking tour, I could do. It was difficult, but, and it was two hours of up and down and uneven pavement, but there were people who couldn't do that. And, yeah, and I know you wanted to go on it, and I had to really think about if I was going to do it. So, you know, things like that. So that was, that was my, what I fed, what I gave to that, that class or that committee meeting. And I'm sure in the future that we'll be more accommodating to those who need a little bit of extra help.
All right, thank you. Council President, Coachmar.
Sure. So I also went to the AWC conference, as Deputy Mayor said. And, you know, I grew up in Portland, which is just across the river from Vancouver. And when they said, "Go west, young man," well, as you went west, it got newer. In other words, Portland is older than Vancouver. Vancouver is 160 years old. It's, it's an older city. So as you go further west, up north, where we are, Federal Way is 30 years old. So a little over 30 years old. So the difference between the cities is where they were redeveloping, we are developing. It's a different concept. But to keep in mind that there are things that we can do right now to develop our city properly. So they, Deputy Mayor went on the walking tour for the waterfront. I went on the walking tour for the downtown core. And the downtown core redeveloped from old, old, old buildings, kind of like Leavenworth looks like, buildings. And what they did was they had art contests for people to put art on this really old stucco on the building so they didn't look old, it looked like beautiful artwork. But what they did use was this thing called Main Street, Main Street program. It said federal funds to develop your Main Street. We don't really have a Main Street. So if you think of our town as needing a Main Street with shops that you can walk into and interesting areas and interesting places for, to meet, interesting places where you can buy candles, interesting places where you can buy different types of artwork. We don't have any of that in our downtown. We don't really have a downtown that we can identify. So our planning, along with DC3, is planning a downtown with sidewalks walkable, with places for kiosks. And, and if we need to identify funds, the Main Street program has been around for quite a while, it's federal funds. And so the interesting ideas, but what I really want to tell all of you, though, is while we're talking about developing our downtown and developing our community, we have to remember that our community, the average income in our community is like 68,000 per person. Bellevue is double that. So when you, when you hear about inflation, when you hear about gas prices, we have a lot of seniors on fixed incomes, we have a lot of people who don't speak English. We have diversity. We have people who travel long distances to work two or three jobs just to make ends meet. Our rent prices are going up. You really need to reach out to your neighbors. I've noticed a lot of cars are breaking down because they probably can't afford gas. And reach out to your neighbors and see how you can help them. I really think that we need to be very cognizant of what's going on in our community and how we can help each other right now. Well, while we are trying to build our community and develop our community, because really, our community is not streets, it's not buildings, it's really people. It's really who we are. And we have a wonderful community of people willing to help each other. So I just wanted to plant that seed. If you wouldn't, just reach out to your neighbors and see how you can help. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Council President. All right, now we're on to the consent agenda. These items have gone through committee and be passed all at once. After I read them all, I ask, I will ask if a council member would, would want a separate item pulled for separate consideration. 7A, the minutes for the June 21st, 2022 regular meeting minutes. Item B, AP vouchers for 51622 through 61522 and payroll vouchers for 5122 through 53122. Item C, monthly financial report, May 2022. D, increase in funding for parks equipment replacement. E, Safe City Avalon server. F, purchase of portable surveillance camera trailers. G, tourism enhancement grant recommendation, 2022, Evergreen District Barbershop Harmony Society. Council, are there any items that we would want pulled for separate consideration? Councilmember Sephardoson, okay. All right, hearing none. Do I, let's see, Council, Council President, Coachmar, do you have a motion?
Yes, sir, I move approval of items A through G on the consent agenda. Second?
There's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passed unanimously. Okay, moving on, we had bumped the item eight. Now we're on to item nine. And by bumped, I mean moved it to the August 9th city council meeting, is that correct? Okay, all right. So there'll be a robust process about that. Item nine, council business, youth commission appointments, Councilmember Walsh.
I move the appointment of Justin Lowey and Alexander Milston as voting members of the youth commission with terms to begin September 1st, 2022 and expire August 31st, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, those, those are, individuals are confirmed, congratulations. Item B, senior advisory commission appointments, Deputy Mayor Honda.
I move the appointments of Vicki Foreman and Cheryl Volheim as voting members to the senior advisory commission with terms to begin September 1, 2022 and expire August 31st, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, those appointments are confirmed, thank you very much. Item C, diversity commission appointments, Councilmember Walsh.
I move to make the following appointments to the diversity commission. Charmon Clardy as a voting member with the term to expire May 31st, 2025. Lisa Wallace as a voting member with the term to expire May 31st, 2023. Tracy, Tracy Myers as a voting member with the term to expire May 31st, 2023. And Sadia Abdullah as an alternate member with the term to expire May 31st, 2025.
I'll second that. There's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Councilmember Sephardoson.
Yeah, a question. Lisa had volunteered to be an alternate, so just a question.
Yeah, I, I think that with that, in order to, one of the things that we discussed is having the most actual diversity of different types on the diversity committee. And I think that Lisa was one of them who truly with the, with, was able to represent a wider diversity than what, than the other options were. And so decided to go with that.
Whiter diversity or wider?
Wider. W-I-D-E-R.
I'm sorry, Jack, I'm sorry, I apologize. I'll behave better.
Council, okay.
I, I think he's talking about, you know, the fact that.
I'm just giving Jack a hard time. Please don't, don't listen to me.
He's talking about disabilities because we haven't really talked about that.
Okay, there's been a motion, a second, is there any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the appointments are confirmed unanimously. All right, item D, the joint use, operation and maintenance facility site selection. We're going to have an updated staff report from our deputy public works director, Desiree Winkler.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council President, council members. Let me get this up and running. All right, I think it's working. Okay, Thomas is going to help rescue me. All right, thank you. Policy question is, should council select the preferred site for the new joint use operations and maintenance facility and authorize $250,000 in expenditures from unallocated capital improvement funds to advance preliminary design? So, back to the background, the need for this project is that our current operation and maintenance staff, then it consists of park staff, surface water management staff, and street staff that maintain all of our parks and streets and surface water, storm drainage infrastructure, are currently spread out in multiple facilities throughout the city. It's inefficient, it's hard for us to get work done, we waste a lot of time going back and forth. The largest site that we have right now is our main Steel Lake Maintenance Facility. As you can see in this aerial photo, you can see that the equipment and vehicles are stacked behind each other, so every morning, there's about an hour of crew time lost as they're trying to jockey the equipment in and out and access the materials that they need. As far as crew facilities, the buildings are well undersized. There is nowhere that we can actually gather all of the staff in one space legally. So if we have to get together for training or meeting or a muster for emergency operations, we are forced to kind of stuff everybody into the maintenance bay at the shop. As far as other needs, security, in the past three years, we've had 17 break-ins. It's been a loss of over $250,000 of equipment loss and damage. We lose about 600 crew hours, it's estimated, due to break-ins, either because they show up and they don't have the equipment they need to work with, and then the time spent to replace that equipment. In addition, we need this project for asset protection. Materials and equipment are left uncovered and unprotected, so that, again, leads to the theft and vandalism. On top of losing equipment, they like to steal catalytic converters, batteries, and fuel. As far as maintenance issues, having the equipment out in the open, there's damage to the equipment, such as hydraulic systems where there's either freeze damage or sun damage, rain getting into places it shouldn't be. And this reduces the lifespan of the equipment, that is, a lot of it's pretty expensive to buy to begin with, upwards of a half million dollars for, you know, a Vector truck. And we can lose about 5% to 35% of the expected lifespan. So what I'm missing from the background information is we actually started this in February 2020. That's when council authorized the expenditures of $250,000 in order to hire a consultant to evaluate what the needs were for an operation and maintenance facility for our city that would last us the next 30, 50 years. We came back in 2021 of May and briefed council on the programming results, so the size and items needed for this facility. We confirmed with council the criteria for the site selection. In May of 2021 to February 2022, we evaluated the site evaluation report. And this included, on the team, there was realtors involved that were helping look for available or potentially available properties that could be either purchased as one single parcel or a conglomerate of several parcels. In May of 2022, we came to council to update on the final site selection report and outline next steps. And here we are, June, July, hopefully to select the preferred site. So as far as programming, what we're looking at is our current needs as well as the future needs, because this facility should be lasting us the next 30, 40, 50 years. We looked at staff, how much space does staff need, the equipment and the vehicles that are needed and storage, and the shop facilities needed, the meeting spaces, the offices, all of that. So you put all that together to come up with a programming results. And what that yielded is that we need about a 10 to 12 acre site, assuming we can find something that's relatively flat. An operation and maintenance building that would house staff offices, crew rooms, lunch muster areas, training and conference room space, locker rooms, a shop, parking, and covered in open storage. What was also identified are things that we currently do not do, that we pay other people to perform for us, and evaluated bringing those in-house, such as fleet maintenance, fueling, and traffic, which we contract with King County to do. So, for example, signs and signals. So when we look for the property search, the criteria was identified as to be basically central to the city between 304th and 348th, between 11th and 28th Avenue South. We wanted to keep, so that we can access the majority of the city and not be at risk that if an earthquake happened, that the bridges on I-5 would block all of our equipment to get to the majority of the city to serve. Land use, we ideally wanted compatible with surroundings. We wanted to minimize property impacts and to the surrounding areas. And we looked at opportunity costs, tax impacts. Is the property better served to be used to stay on the city's tax roll, for example, or be available for another opportunity for development? Properties looked at include the existing site. We looked at all city-owned properties. The realtor took a very hard look to find 10 to 11 acre parcels, very difficult to come by. And then also looked at consolidating multiple parcels, which are also very hard to come by and a lot more costly in order to get to the 10, 11 acres we need. So again, the property search boundaries are central to the city. This helps with the efficiency of operations. So, for example, it's 15 minutes with no traffic to get from one end of the city to the other, either east-west, north-south, especially when we're running, say, storm operations or doing de-icing. To be able to have a central location to come back and forth and get materials makes it a lot easier or to bring back equipment to get serviced or fueled. So, Site 1 was looked at more closely. Site 1 is our existing site, Steel Lake Maintenance Facility, located off of 28th Avenue South, South 312. The existing site is about six acres. And in order to, and it's not flat, in order to get to the 10, 12 acres we need, we would be required to acquire property to the north, which would require purchasing upwards of seven, eight parcels with existing homes. The pros of this site is that it is an existing use, there's minimal natural environment impacts, and there's Interstate 5 on one side. So as far as neighbors go, Interstate 5. The cons are, it does require property purchase, it'd be $8 to $10 million. The site's not level. Construction staging would be a little bit of a challenge because we're there trying to operate an existing facility while building a new one. And the apartments to the south are not a compatible use and are not great neighbors at this point, since that's where most of the time the access is occurring for the theft and vandalism. So Site 2, with all the properties looked at that the city owns, the most compatible site was the one south of 312, west of 28th. This property is a city-owned property, so the price is right. It's a flat site, and the uses are compatible around it. There's a school to the south, then quite a bit of an environmental buffer to the west to keep from disturbing the existing residential uses to the west. The cons is that it would be a loss of park property. However, further slides, we talk about how we can mitigate the loss of those park amenities. The only kind of undeveloped private property that we're able to find that met the criteria was located off of First Avenue and 320th. The pros are, there's no impacts to existing developed use, and it's got great arterial access. The cons are, it would be over $16 million in property costs, and this isn't a property that's currently on the market. There is a wetlands on the property, and so there will most likely be some mitigation required. There is residential use surrounding, there would be opportunity to buffer that. But then there's also loss opportunity for other development at this location. So as far as a cost summaries per site, Site 1, the existing site, would be a total of $41 million because of the additional property needing to be purchased. That is $7 million over the preferred site, which is Site 2, the Steel Lake Park Annex, which would come in at a total of $34 million. And then the private property undeveloped off of 320th had be a total cost of $50 million, which is $16 million over the preferred alternative. And note that this is the cost for our current use. This does not include if we were to add in new operations such as fuel or fleet maintenance. So the preferred site is Site 2. It is the least cost since it's a city-owned property. There's no property acquisition or displacements required. It's a level site. It provides for easy construction staging since it's away from existing operations. It has compatible surrounding use and buffer, and it has mitigatable park impacts. So at the last council meetings, there were some suggestions on looking at some alternative locations, and staff took some time to look at those. There was a previously reviewed property that's no longer available. It was actually small for what we needed, but we could have made it work. It was a little under eight acres. It just sold, my understanding, for $31 a square foot, which would have been a $15 million acquisition cost. Looking at sites east of Interstate 5, which would be on the former warehouse or currently IRG-owned property, current bank appraisals come in about $29 million or $40 per square foot. Suggestion was made to look at a parcel off of Pacific Highway on 330th, which is the East Wind Hotel area. The East Wind Hotel itself is only about an acre or less than an acre, and so in order for this to work, you would have to acquire a whole lot of developed parcels, which include, I believe there's a mobile home park, an apartment complex, and then to the north of Pack Highway, there are businesses there. So combined total, in order to get to the 10 acres, 12 acres that we would need, it would be about $73 million, primarily because it's developed. So that's about $119 per square foot for an acquisition in a location like that. And then the other one requested to look at is around 336th and Pack Highway, otherwise known as Kids Corner. The current bank appraisal is about $28.7 million. That comes in right at $44 per square foot, which is consistent with what we're seeing for raw land in that area. And so any of these options will be viable, it's just how much money you want to bring to the table. So it could increase the cost anywhere from, you know, 30 to 60, 70 million dollars for the project. You know, no one likes to lose parks, okay? I get that, and we've heard you loud and clear. But we've been really working with staff and parks director on what are the opportunities that we have to be able to mitigate this, and is it possible to mitigate the losses? One such concern is the parking loss, and that we actually would be able to enhance and add. We would need to and plan to replace the skate park. An idea was provided for a perimeter walking path, which would provide, you know, recreational opportunity as well as additional security for our site. And then there's a couple of baseball, small baseball fields that would need to be mitigated. So more specifically, the skate park could tentatively be moved across the street at the Steel Lake Park proper, and it could be an upgraded facility to meet current safety and design standards. So there's an opportunity there. As far as the perimeter walking path, again, that's more activation of area and getting people, you know, to help improve the safety overall and security. And then as far as baseball field mitigation, the proposal, you know, would help with parks because they would be able to consolidate field maintenance requirements. To be perfectly honest, you know, our park staff is completely understaffed. They can't maintain what they have today, and the Park Pros Plan is very, you know, talks about that. Talks about you're either going to increase the number of staff or you're going to have to decrease the amount of parks that you're maintaining. So if you're able to, say, add lighting to an existing facility, you can add hours of use, available use, and then consolidate that maintenance for our already stretched park staff. So more specifics about the park use, I think there were some questions about how much these two little fields over at the Steel Lake Annex are used. So there's some history listed up there. Most currently, the parks, these two fields have been used about 621 hours last year, primarily Steel Lake Little League uses them, March through May. There has been decline in numbers with the Steel Lake Little League, and they've been using primarily the South County fields. So then the other use for these fields is tournament time. So during March through September, they'll use these facilities if needed for tournament And so that's about five weekends a year that they're booked for tournaments. March through September is sporadic, and then the fields aren't used, October through February. But again, this is easily mitigatable by adding lights to another facility where you can increase the hours of available use. The parking, so the existing parking at Steel Lake Annex has 56 stalls. The current design that we propose has 110 stalls, and this would help out. The soccer field and the Steel Lake Park sees a lot of parking issues during the summer when it's heavily used, and this can help improve the safety along 28th Avenue where we find people illegally parking anyways. So there's opportunities here to actually enhance the parking for park users. So the options considered are, one, select Site 2, the southwest corner of 312th and 28th Avenue South, as a preferred location for the new joint use operation maintenance facility and authorize $250,000 in expenditures from unallocated capital improvement funds, which include Fund 401 for swim and Fund 306 for transportation to advance preliminary design. Or option two, select an alternative site as a preferred location for the new joint use operation maintenance facility and authorize $250,000 in expenditures from unallocated capital improvement funds to advance preliminary design. And then Mayor recommends option one, to select Site 2 as a preferred location for the joint use operation maintenance facility and authorize $250,000 in expenditures to advance preliminary design. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Dovey?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, if I may. One, when you look at the design that we have there, it seems like we're replacing parking lots more than we are replacing park green grass. Is that the right perception? I mean, I used to play soccer at that field a lot, and I played baseball for many years at those two places, but the biggest area that you're talking about replacing is the asphalt in the parking lot, is that correct? Or am I wrong with my perception?
The parking lots would be replaced, and they're closer up to 312. And I guess, let me share, the soccer field is staying.
No, I understand.
So that's, so yeah, that's something that we're not taking away.
And you're connecting it with paths to get to Steel Lake Park, or you're having connectivity around the area now.
Right, and we'll need to be doing sidewalks and frontage improvements on 28th Avenue as part of this project.
And then, when you proposed the light fields, where would you actually propose that be? where would you actually propose that be, or what's the plan for that?
I'm gonna let Director Hutton chime in on that. And then I'll stop sharing my screen so that we can get the video camera in the right spot.
So an easy fix for the mitigation would be, we put in two new ball fields about seven years ago over at Lakota. There's two little ball fields closer to the Three Twelfth side of Lakota. It would be, I guess, to the north of the track, if my directions are right. There's two new little ball fields there. If we added LED lights, irrigation, and, and some drainage in there, those two ball fields would easily absorb the loss of what we would lose at the two little ball fields at Steel Lake. That'd be the easiest one. There are probably other options, but that's the best option because those are newer fields, and they're wildly underused right now.
And the skateboard park is executed to move across the street to that other area, across the street from where it's at, is that?
Proposing to Steel Lake Five, which is almost directly across Three Twelve from it now, from where it sits today.
And one other question I have is, when you talk about the pricing and you said, you mentioned fueling and fleet maintenance is not included in the pricing. What's, what's that look like? Because that's probably going to be added. I mean, do we have a number, or do we need more land, or what's that look like?
We do not need more land. So when we did the programming, we assumed that at some point in the future, we would add fueling, and hopefully that would be immediate, and we would add fleet maintenance. So that'll be, you know, as we develop the project. I think fueling would be a slam dunk. We looked at kind of the, we're already paying for fuel, all right? And we pay fuel to Federalway Public Schools. And although we get a very good price through purchasing it through Federalway Public Schools, they still have a surcharge on top of it. So that, that additional surcharge would be able to pay for the initial capital required to install the fuel, fueling system. I believe the estimate was about seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of additional capital in order to add the fueling.
So the reason I ask the question is, you're talking thirty to fifty years is what we've been hearing over and over again that the maintenance project's going to be. And there is some question on the council, and you've kind of sorted them out with your slide, these different places. On the east side of the freeway, you looked at IFG or whatever, I always get the name right, and you looked at all these different places. And it's come up that there might be another spot on the other side where the fire department may be selling property. But it would seem to me that we, I hate to keep asking people to go down the rabbit trail to find out the perfect solution, but we need to do this. But I think we need to know the cost of the fueling exactly and what that was to program in it. So when we start this, that's part of the beginning of the project. It's not an add-on later on. That's just my thought. And, and we ferret out that other location just to find out if it's still overpriced or more than we have in the budget based on what you've already found, or maybe it's less. But I don't know if it's going to be an issue if we make the final decision, get the go-ahead in two weeks once we ferret those two things out. Your presentation to me is very, very compelling just to do it now. But I would like to know what, how many more millions it's going to be to put the fueling in from the get-go and, and the maintenance, if that's going to be programmed into it so we don't come back two years from now and say, now it's time to do it. We've already done it from the get-go.
And I think that the authorization for the two-hundred-fifty-thousand dollars is what we wanted to be able to ferret out. Because regardless of what piece of property we put, we use, the fueling will always, will be the additional cost, or the fleet maintenance will be the additional cost. And, you know, in the future, we also have to come back with a financial plan. So whatever the total cost is, we're going to have to come back. And I'm bringing the finance director. And we're going to have to talk about how this will be funded. And so, yes, at that point, we can bring all those total costs to you.
Well, and maybe I'm talking for the rest of the council, but I'll just, could I just finish one more thing? I don't think there's any debate on spending the two-hundred-fifty thousand to get there. The debate in my mind is, is there another piece of land, one more that's out there that we should at least look at? And from my standpoint, I would want to have that fuel thing built in from the very beginning and not have, make you come back again and say, we need to spend more money. I'd rather make the decision all at once, and then it's not coming back here again, and you just run your business, and away we go.
Yeah, and Council, go ahead.
So council member. So the reason it's set up the way it is is when we originally started this back in 2019, we were asked to include those as alternatives, which is what we did. So what we shared with council in May of this year is the fueling is seven-hundred thousand dollars to get it off the ground, which is a less-than-ten-year payback. And the maintenance facility for fleet is four-point-two million, which is a seventeen-year payback. Both of them can be bonded against the existing fleet and fuel. And basically, the city will end up ahead each year. The reason we did it the way we did and the way it's being presented the way it is is going back to that original conversation of those fleet functions are things we don't do today. So replace what we're doing today, carry them as options. They are in there in practical terms. And, and as Desiree showed on the slide, they're, they're programmed in there for space. So when we come back as part of the funding package, it'll be, here's option one, here's option two. But as far as programming goes, they're both included.
But are they programmed into the thirty-two million?
No, they're beyond that.
Don't you think that maybe they should be from the get-go? Or maybe I'm missing something?
So I, I, they are programmed in, just not against the thirty-two, is, I think the, and it goes back to how we were directed to originally look at this with the, looking at replacing in kind with these alternatives. So those are being carried forward, and they will absolutely be, and I'm hearing you loud and clear, they should be part of the funding package we bring back. But whether they're included or not, we're including the space allocation for them to be available in the future.
I'm only one of seven, and that's the way I think. I don't know if everybody else agrees, but I would rather see it, you come back and say it's not thirty-two, it's thirty-four point five. So all the citizens that are looking know exactly what it is, and they don't come back sometimes and say, oh, how come you added it? I mean, that's my.
So, and then your second question, we did look at one additional property today that was not on the slide, which is the one I believe you were referring to in your comments. And we, and we talked to the fire department. They're expecting forty million dollars for the sale of that property, which is in line with that same roughly thirty-one to forty dollars per square foot. So that is going to be the same range as every other property we've looked at. We had a commercial broker, that CBRE, that I think most of the council members are intimately familiar with from past property acquisitions of the city. They spent a year searching the city trying to find parcels. And the recommendations you're seeing before you are their recommendations. Any property we go out and acquire, we need to be planning to spend thirty to forty million dollars to acquire that property. That's the cost of land right now.
Okay, we've got Councilmember Sephardosson, and then Council President.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Desiree, for the presentation. I do support your recommendation, Councilmember Dovey, in terms of going ahead and, and putting it up front and making that part of the, of the process, the fueling facility. But it's just, again, a comment. I have several questions with Site One. So let me back up. I, I think, you know, a lot of council members have looked at the existing facility, and there's an urgency to get it replaced, right? Because of its situation. And so with that in mind, I would say if we were to look at Site One, acquisition of new, of the properties, surrounding properties, how long would that take? That and leveling of the, of the property?
Based on the fact that I would assume we would have to get into condemnation. So I would say it's going to push our project timeline and getting it completed out at least eighteen months or two years.
So that's a con, you know, from what I see. And then the other con that you mentioned was the apartments to the south of that property, right?
Yes.
They're also going to be to the east of Site Two, right?
Across the street, yes, yes.
So is that, is that going to be the same problem that you have with Site One?
Well, at least they won't be sharing a fence. So I'm hoping, and we plan on, and as we do the design for the new site, is having better security installed initially as part of the site.
Okay. Thank you. So if Site Two is voted on tonight, what is the plan for Site One?
The initial plan for Site One was to consider surplusing it, which could yield three, four million dollars that could be utilized to help pay for the new site. Certainly, there could be considered options on maintaining the site. But again, we kind of need to move ahead with looking at what options there are for that.
Okay, so is it possible to move the skate park there instead of losing property on the Steel Lake Park?
Any, yes, absolutely.
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Council President, Coach Moore.
I have total heartburn over losing Steel Lake Annex. It's a park. We're going to have downtown development. People are going to be living in that area. They're going to be using all that park space. We're trying to shoehorn the skate park into an already overused Steel Lake Park area. And did you include that money for the Steel Lake, for, in Steel Lake Park, for the skate park in your amount that you included for Site?
We did. We, we put a million-dollar placeholder for mitigation.
I thought you said that. So, but even at that, even if you, the thing is, is that Steel Lake is already well overused. It's not enough parking. They use the Steel Lake Annex, which you're telling me you will have still overflow parking at Steel Lake Annex. But that would only be in the evening, not during the day, because you're going to be using it during the day. So I guess my, I would like to, if we, if we can't explore South King Farm Rescue Property east of the freeway because of the cost, then I would like to explore Site One, as Councilmember Sephardosson is mentioning, more. I, I feel like we're just overlooking that, or not looking into that property. You know, I drove that, I looked at those houses. I, I don't know if we have to condemn them. You might have the broker go knock on the door. My son is a, my son-in-law is a civil engineer, a developer. He went and knocked on doors and said, hey, I'll give you so much for your property. I, I mean, I'm not sure you have to condemn. They, they may want to sell. I mean, those properties are kind of not in really good shape. I, I'm not sure who owns them. But at, at any rate, and you don't have to let, literally, I don't think we've explored that Site One thoroughly. I think we're going to, the easiest way to go, which is not, I mean, if you're thinking about the, the future of our city, we're going to need every single speck of park space in that downtown core if we want to redevelop that area around there, which we obviously already are because Sound Transit has at least three properties that are going to have apartments on them. And where are these people going to go? I mean, you're going to have an overflow of parking because they're going to, these lower-income apartments usually only have one parking space. And a lot of people have two cars, and you, or you don't have visitors. And we're talking about trails. And here, we're going to put sand and gravel and machinery right in the middle. To me, it would be like putting sand, gravel, and machinery right next to Nordstrom's in downtown Seattle. It doesn't make sense to me at all. I, I would like to, I, I'm simply going to vote against losing Steel Lake Annex, for sure. But I would like to look into the Site One a little more thoroughly, unless we can come up with some other property in the meantime. And I know that you're telling me we can't. I don't, I don't, I, you know, if you go down to Three Fifty-Six, we've got all that property down there. I know a lot of it is wetlands, but you can mitigate that. Brook Lake, I mean, I, I just, twelve acres, I know is a lot of property. But, you know, you get down between Three Fifty-Six and, and the cemetery, there's huge amounts of property down there that are all wooded. And I know that they're wetlands because I know that we designated them as wetlands about ten years ago. But I, I'm not convinced that we can't find another spot for this ONM facility.
All right, thank you. Deputy Mayor Honda.
Thank you. So, oops, sorry about that. I have some questions, and I have some things I'd like to say about this. I find it a little backwards of how we're doing this because we're picking a site, we're going to, you'd like two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to advance the design. But yet, as a council, we haven't heard how much this is going to, to truly cost and how it's going to be funded. And I, I find that, I, I am not really comfortable with that. I, I'd like to know, really, before we move much farther, the potential ways to fund it. I'd like to know even the project timeline. I realize that where you guys are at right now isn't ideal. I realize that there's some issues there. And I would like to get you out of there. But I also want to do this project right. And it's going to last fifty to seventy years. This is a long-term project for the city. It has to be done right. It has to be in the right location. I don't support taking parkland either. And I think when we talk about the cost of the project, we have to talk about the true and complete cost. What is it going to cost to buy more property for parks in the future? We're a growing city. We don't get rid of a property that's already a park without having some way to replace it or even knowing where, where we would find property to replace it. And we have to include that cost in it. And so there's, so what is the timeline for this? Let's say that we, we voted on this tonight. What's the timeline?
The timeline, we would plan on completing design in 2023 if we did a traditional design bid, build project, and then be under construction sometime probably mid-late 2024 with probably about a year, year, eighteen-month-long construction.
And funding it, I mean, just off the top of your head, we go out for, what, a bond? How, what are you going to do?
We, there it is.
Steve Grim.
We have taken a look at it. So I know within the SWIM Capital Improvement Fund, which would be responsible for a third of the costs, we've looked at, you know, that's, that's the revenue to help, you know, pay for it over time. But the idea being is that it would be probably, most likely, councilmatic bonds.
Let's have Steve Grim weigh in, thank you.
Steve jump in.
Yeah, it would be a combination of debt and then the existing capital funds set aside. EJ, I think last time you, you discussed this, and you know the history of the planning a little bit better than I do.
Yeah, so Ade had worked on this for an extensive amount of time with us. So I think Steve's still getting up to speed a little bit. So within the SWIP, there's already eight million dollars set aside for it with the direction on the SWIP to go out for a bond for multiple projects, this being one of them, to increase that eight million to about fourteen to fifteen million dollars for the SWIP contribution. The fueling and the fleet maintenance, we already kind of touched on briefly. But both of them, Ade and myself, we're very confident that basically the bond payment and the savings from what we're paying today would more than cover the bond payment for both fleet items, both fuel and fleet maintenance, and the city would make out ahead every year. But then at the end of the respective ten or seventeen years, we would recoup a significant amount of money on both of those. The streets, CIP has sufficient funding to bond against the 304 and 306 funds to fund the street portion of that. Where the conversation gets a little bit interesting is with the parks' third of it. So with Site Two, and this is a subject that's been tiptoed around a little bit, and we're trying to be, to be sensitive about following the SEPA and NEPA process that, you know, we should be making preferred alternative before we're looking at a funding mechanism. But that being said, to directly answer your question, the challenge with Site One or any other site is the Parks Department needs to come up with a third of the value of the project then. project then, which comes back to the general fund. With Site Two, we can count the value of the land built on the site as part of the donation from the Parks Department, which effectively pulls that down, which allows us to increase where we do have sufficient funding to fund this against SWIM and the capital, against the Streets capital, to increase those bond amounts to not have an impact on the general fund. But certainly going after Site One, going after any of the other properties that were mentioned tonight, Parks Department, and, which in effect means the general fund is going to need to come up with $12 to $15 million before we start looking at property act. So, I mean, that number's going to go up a third with the property cost. And then that would effectively be going out for a councilmatic bond to cover that portion of the funding.
So we would be coming back with a combination, you would ultimately want to see a pro forma that shows how we're using the fund balances that have been set aside and how we're building in operational savings in the future and how we're building the debt service into the future budgets.
So in real-dollar impact to the general fund, what is the difference between Site One and Site Two?
Site One, it's $12 to $15 million that would have to be financed against the general fund.
What would that be per year out of the general fund?
Oh, gosh, it depends on how many years. You finance it over probably 20 years or something, right?
So ballpark it over 20 years. We financed the community center for 20 years.
So while he's thinking, I'll answer the question for Site Two. For Site Two, for the general fund, the impacts would be effectively zero is the way it's working out right now. There would not be a bond against the general fund. It would be funded by the others, and then the value of the land would cover that portion, and we would increase, namely SWIM, by a prorata.
Are we talking at least $1 million a year?
No, it's not that much.
No, no, I'm talking about at Site One. If we did Site One, what would be the general, the ballpark general fund impact?
So, I mean, it's $12 to $15 million prorated over 20 years. So your principal payment's going to be, call it 750 grand. So you're probably looking at, what, 850 to 9 would be, I guess.
Just under $1 million a year.
Round numbers. And, you know, the longer we wait, the interest rates are going up, so.
Versus no general fund input?
Correct.
Right.
So in the.
A year. Okay, all right.
So.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the information. So in the past few years, we've discussed all of the city buildings and the things that we need to do in all of the city buildings. And I'd like, you know, I realize that this needs to be done. I'm not against doing this, but I also realize that there's other needs in the city, too. And so I'm having, boy, I'd really like to have an overall picture of what needs to be done in the city long-term with this building, if we move City Hall downtown, what that would look like. You know, there's so many questions out there about the future of the city, and we're being asked to make this decision for a building that, that's going to last at least 50 years, probably longer. But my biggest concern with using park property is, we did the PROS Plan, started it in 2017, council voted on it in 2019, and we had a really good feedback from the public. The public was really invested in this. Our parks are really important to the health and well-being of the city. Our parks are important to bring new businesses here because they will look at what your parks are like. They'll look at what your retail's like. They'll look at all sorts of stuff, but parks are one of the things that they look at. And even in the PROS Plan, on the first page, it talks about youth who have access to healthy recreational activities, who do not have access to healthy recreational activities are at risk for delinquency and involvement in the juvenile justice system. We're going to make more housing downtown. We're talking about that right now, a lot of housing downtown. This would be, Steel Lake is a park that families could be walking to if they live downtown. They have Town Square Park, that's small. It's not going to fit the needs of all of the new residences downtown. Steel Lake is next. And if we take property away from Steel Lake, we're taking property away from families who can use it in the future, for future, future, who are going to be living downtown. I just don't see that that is a good vision for the city. I don't see it as a vision for developing our downtown into what we're trying to make it. And I'm really, really concerned about that. I, another thing in the PROS Plan, we talked about doing a master plan overall for Steel Lake. We talked about that for years. When I walked at Steel Lake with you, EJ, and John, I saw a lot of, in my mind, I saw a lot of things that that property could be, not just the ball fields. It could be so much more. And, you know, we need a, we need a park that is for children and people of all abilities. I don't know where we could put that. We could put it there. I mean, we're one of the few cities our size that don't have a park that, for children and youth of all abilities, that, and we, and that would be a perfect location for it. I think as a city, we've made a lot of investments in our parks and our open spaces and our trails, and I just don't see taking park property away when we have at least Site One and the fire district property that potentially could work. So I would just like us to continue looking at least at Site One and not vote on this tonight. I'm simply not ready, and my vote would be a no anyway.
Thank you. Just point of, point of information. So I want to make sure it's very clear that what we're really talking about with regard to Site Two is moving two small Little League baseball fields and moving the skate park across the street. Is that the impact to the park?
That was close, but yes. It would be the loss, right, of the skateboard park, which would need to be replaced somewhere. And then the loss of the two fields, which are proposed to be mitigated by enhancing use at other fields in the city.
Two Little League baseball fields, but Carl Grosh Field, the soccer field stays?
Soccer field stays, and then the parking, which, you know, we need to, we need to work on is, you know, how much is available during the day for all the public to use versus the city staff to use.
So if you move the, if you move, just, I just want to make sure that we're talking about, we're not talking about closing a park here. What we're talking about is theoretically moving the skate park literally across the street and two small baseball fields go away. That's the impact, that's the difference, or that's the loss of the park, of park space?
That is the primary loss of park space.
For $900,000 a year. That's, that would, the $900,000 a year, $850,000 per year out of the general fund would be the hit if we did anything, at a minimum, if we did anything other than utilize the property that we already own.
Yes.
That's the debate. Okay, Councilmember Norton.
Thank you. I appreciate. It's okay. I appreciate your reports that you've given, and I've thought about this. I actually have questions that aren't really, have nothing to do with anyone else's questions. So when you're building, let's just say that this goes through, and you're building the new facility, it's going to be in the same place as the old facility, correct? So you're going to tear down the old one, you're going to demo it, and then put a new building up that's larger, and then put in more parking spaces?
It's actually, Site Two, the preferred site, is not where our current ONM facility is.
It isn't, okay.
Yeah, that's kitty corner.
Okay, okay. Also, I'm hearing a lot of pushback because of green spaces being removed from the site. And when I'm looking at new developments, because that's what I work in every day, most new inner-city and most new developments have green spaces either on the rooftop or they have them around them. And I noticed, like, in the city of Seattle, they require companies to create a green space near or at the location of the building that they're making. And I was wondering if that's something that we could do to make up for that, especially when we're talking about developing the downtown area, is putting in little parks everywhere and just having places for people to sit in the grass. It's just, it's just something that I noticed that people utilize quite often when it is available, even if it's a small space, that we could do that to make up for the loss that's upsetting some of the council members so much because it's just, my opinion is, an extra million dollars a year is not something that the city can do at this time. It's just not financially feasible. As, just, it's just not something we can do, especially when we're looking at interest rates and also the timeline and how much this would put that timeline off. It's just going to increase the price exponentially. I mean, I'm looking at my own cost increase. I've just about doubled my pricing. I work in construction, and I have, I'm very close to have doubled my costs and what I'm passing on to the general contractor as a subcontractor, and they're taking it. They're allowing me to do it in one year. So I'm saying, I'm thinking, if we put this off for another 18 months so that we can acquire people's homes and go through all of that and the condemnation, we may potentially double the cost of this project just by putting it off for 18 months. And that's just what I've experienced in the last year in my business. I don't want to lose parks. I don't want to lose green space. I love going for walks with my husband. That's what we do. We have so much fun. But in our neighborhood, we have parks that are in our neighborhood, and we use those parks, the dogs and the kids, and there's swings there. And they're not that big, but it's just a thought that we could incorporate that into our city plan for the future, that we just have more parks all around. A lot of places do it, and just, I just, I keep, my inner soul is telling me, we can't afford another $900,000 a year of payments on a piece of property and all the work that you guys have put into this, trying to find the best option financially for the city. I really appreciate the work that you've done, so I'll stop now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh?
I think Councilmember Tran would speak for me.
Councilmember Tran. Councilmember Tran, then Councilmember Walsh, then Councilmember Dovey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have a couple of questions. Between Site One and Site Two, the cost would be around additional $12 million to the general fund. Is that correct assumption?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. If we go with Site Three, the cost would be additional $16 million as compared to Site Two. Is that correct?
Yes. So Site Three, the impact of the general fund would be even higher. So we were just comparing Site One and Two.
Okay. So with Site One and Three, the cost would be much higher, and most likely, we will have to condemn those property if they're not willing to sell, which mean we are going to upset, make a lot of people upset, right? If we go through that process. If I hear you correctly during your presentation, that if we are going to build this thing on Site Two, we are going to have 110 parking spaces versus currently, we only have 56. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so that's another plus. The funding questions that some of the council members asked earlier, in my opinion, at this meeting is not relevant because regardless of which site we go, we still have to come up with the funding source for that, right? So, yes, I agree with some of you that I don't want to lose park space either. But looking at the cost, additional $12 million that are going to hit us, and we only save, what, two baseball field, I agree with Councilmember Norton that we can't really afford it. This is the budget year. It is going to be a very difficult year for us, for all of us, because it is the budget year. And then now we have to figure it out, additional $12 million on top of that. It is going to be very difficult for all of us. So from a financial perspective, I think Site Two makes the most sense to me, in my opinion. So you have my support on Site Two. Thank you.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yeah, I think that one thing that's been overlooked here is for, you know, with the concern about losing parks, is that if we go to Site Two, that original Site One, if we want, we can use it for parkland. And also, there's concern about, right now, I mean, there is definitely a lack of parking in Steel Lake, where the current places, you know, Site One, that would be ideal for additional parking right across the street, just a different street from Steel Lake Park. And it would be, you know, great parking space as well as potentially additional park space. And so I think that, you know, especially with the consideration of the finances, says Park Two, but also, we won't be losing, or we don't need to lose park space by going with Site Two because that Site One can become additional park space and certainly additional parking for Steel Lake Park. And so I think that Site Two definitely makes the most sense.
Councilmember Dovey?
Yeah, excuse me, pushed the wrong button the wrong way. Thank you. You know, as I've been listening to everyone, I agree with the council members that say that this Site Two is the financially most conservative way to go. We save money long-term, we get everybody together. I do think that we're not really taking, we're taking park space away, but we're replacing it with two fields that people can use at Lakota or wherever it is where we play them. I mean, I played softball in this city for many, many years and been involved in parks since the day of Celebration Park. So improving facilities make them more available to people to use. So we may be losing two small fields that, as you look at the graph, are being used less and less, and gain the ability to have fields at Lakota being used more and more. I like the idea of having the connectivity of the path around the facility because now we can connect the houses downtown so they can walk to these locations or ride their bikes. Jack's idea of maybe if it's in the budget and we decide to take the six acres that are across the street and turn it into green space makes a lot of sense. We're actually not losing anything. We're gaining probably a couple acres. And we're taking asphalt that we already have that has 66 parking spots and making it 110, so we're not losing park, park space as much. We're taking away asphalt and redoing it. Again, if you played on those fields for years, there's all that parking behind the historical society, which we're not taking, we're adding to it. So, I mean, I look at this, and we've talked about this, I mean, since I've been on the council now for six months, we've been talking about it. Most of the council members on this dais talked about it for four years prior to it. If you look at the debate when they said, hey, go to the staff and say, let's start it. So I'd just like to move that we select Site Two, and we, you know, however you want to say it, we select Site Two tonight, we vote on it, move on with it, and then have the staff come back to add those other things that we need to program and the financing. But let's get started. And so I would just move that we select Site Two and move forward.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Unless, well, we've got to have a second first before we have a question.
Right, right, hold on.
Second.
Okay. Would you actually, would you state?
Just read it, okay?
Okay. And we'll have that discussion.
I moved to select Site Two, southwest corner of South 312th Street and Twenty-Eighth Avenue South as a site of the new joint-use operation and maintenance facility and authorized two hundred and fifty thousand in expenditures from unallocated capital improvement funds to advance the preliminary design.
Second.
Motion and second is your discussion. Council President, Coach Mark.
Here's the issue. This city is spending one point five million per year on a PAC. That's how much money we're spending on that PAC. Not to mention what we're spending on the bonds that's not paid for yet. I believe the target property is going to be sold under the TC Three. It's probably worth five million. I don't know if it's worth more than that now. That'll cut down, because you already, you've already spent that. It's already, you have to pay off the bonds, so we can't use that money. You're telling me three point four, three or four million if we sell the current Steel Lake property where that O and M facility is? You would make three to four million on that property, correct?
That's estimated, yes.
Yeah, so you would deduct that from your twelve. You haven't deducted that yet. So I, I, I have a problem with, we're designing our future. We're planning our future. And you're saying, oh, it's only this or it's only that. You're shoehorning in a skate park, which by the way, I know you liked that skate park. You're the one that wanted it.
I would have started.
It was two fifty back then. I know that. And, and I know it needs to be upgraded, but you're going to put it in Steel Lake Park, which is already over, overused. Where are you going to put it? I, I still don't understand why we haven't looked at Brook Lake. You know, we could use the Blueberry Farm. I don't know how much property there is at Brook Lake. You've already got sand and gravel piled up there at Brook Lake. I would like to make an amendment to your motion to postpone this for two weeks to have further discussion. I don't think two weeks is going to be a big issue so we can have further discussion on some of the other issues yet.
Ryan, is that a proper amendment? As a point of order? Is that an amendment to the motion?
It is an amendment to the motion. I don't think it's top of the table.
How can I make it so I can ask for a furtherance?
Right.
So you can make a subsidiary motion to, to postpone indefinitely. So if you want to make a motion to postpone this vote, then you could make that motion.
I want to do that for two weeks, not for the next council meeting, not indefinitely.
So the motion is to postpone the current vote to August ninth?
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? It's been a motion and a second. Is there a, is there a discussion with regard to the amendment? Deputy Mayor?
I think, I believe it would be to the July, not August ninth. Isn't this July fifth?
So two meetings now?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
That's okay.
The next meeting is?
July nineteenth.
July nineteenth.
Yeah, that's right.
So what are we asking staff to do between now and July nineteenth?
I want to look at some other issues yet. I have some other questions.
I don't think two weeks is going to hurt this project.
So two week, I thought you said two week, two meetings, not two weeks, or two weeks. Uh, Councilmember Dovey?
So I personally don't have a problem if we wait two weeks to make the vote. However, I, I would like to know a list of what you want in the next two weeks.
Yeah.
Because it makes sense. I'm okay with that. But we vote in two weeks.
Thank you.
But I, what do we want to, what do you want? What's the list for the staff to bring forward in two weeks?
Yep.
And, and maybe we don't do that on the dais.
To do it here at the dais, but I mean.
It's important to let, you know, let my office, let me and my office.
Let the mayor know what we got. So we have this, you know, we've had the presentation four times now. We'll get a couple more great graphs, I'm sure.
All right. Council, Councilmember Sepadossen and then the Deputy Mayor.
With Brook Lake, I, I know they've always talked about making sure it's central and Brook Lake would be south end of the, of the city. And I'm sure that is one of the reasons it hasn't been considered.
I know it was.
Maybe that may not be a good alternative.
I, I don't know if it is or isn't. Let's talk.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
I have a question.
Yes, Deputy Mayor.
Uh, so my question is, is for the funding of this facility, will it be a council man fund that we're going to have to fund it with? Because that's, that's council voting, not the public voting on a, on a bond. Is that what you're expecting, staff?
Steve, EJ?
So some of this depends on which site comes to the top. So if it's Site Two, the bonds would be against restricted funding. So yes, it would be councilmatic. If it's Site, anything else, I think we need to figure out the levels. I would assume it'll be councilmatic, but I mean, Steve can weigh in on that if he's got other thoughts. But I don't think we're crossing any thresholds with that.
Well, I, I just don't, you know, it's something for council members to think about, actually, so.
What's the, what's to think about?
It's something we haven't done here as a council as long as I've been on the council is, as a council voting for a bond. So I, I would just think that it's something that a council member needs to seriously think about.
Okay, thank you. I want to frame up the issue. Did you have something else? Okay. All right, I don't see any other, Councilmember Walsh, were you?
Yeah. If, if it is a councilmatic, I mean, with, with Councilmember Honda, if it were a councilmatic bond, if it were for the other sites, it would be a lot larger bond that would take considerably more thought than the smaller bond for Site Two.
I'm just thinking about the whole project. My other question was though, I don't know who brought it up, but someone brought up using the Site One as future park property, but isn't Site One going to be sold to help fund Site Two being built? So I'm a little confused about that.
Can you talk about that? Is that, are you using the potential proceeds in your, of, of Site One in your, in, in the analysis? Or is that just something that is a, a possibility that you could do that and, and pay that out?
It is, it is a possibility and I think you would need the proceeds from a sale of Site One in order to make Parks, you know, contribution whole for a third of the cost. So it would be a lot, it would, it would be a smaller, if you held on to it and didn't get the three, four million dollars you could get from it, then there may be, you know, a general fund, smaller general fund contribution that Parks would need to make.
Could you, so if, if Site One is not sold, there's a smaller contribution from Parks?
Right, versus if you went to Site One completely and had to buy twelve million dollars worth of property and you couldn't offset the value of the property of Site Two plus the sale of Site One, then you would need to come up with the roughly a million dollars a year.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just have one other question, just to clarify that. And it would be in my assumption if we decided to move ahead in two weeks with this proposal after we get some information that council's asking for, if the decision was made to keep the property that the maintenance parks on and if it's worth three million dollars, we're talking about making up the difference of three million dollars, not a million dollars a year.
Correct.
So your bonding would not be through one million dollars a year. It would be whatever that three million, if that's the number, would be in cost out of the thirty-two million, it would bump it to thirty-five million.
Potentially, yes.
Potentially. And that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, correct.
We're not talking a million dollars a year for twenty years. We're talking a, a big number, but it's a smaller sum of the whole amount.
Yeah, I think there's kind of two conversations going on here. One is if you were to build on, which I think was the original question, was to build on Site Two and not surplus Site One, which would be exactly what you described. I think there's also a tangent conversation going on about what happens if you build on Site One and just leave Site Two. And that goes back to the original bonding conversation, which is about the million dollars a year. But I think the two conversations are kind of getting combined from some of the looks I'm seeing from some of the council members. So Site Two, if you, there's effectively, call it two A and two B. Two A would be build on Site Two, surplus Site One, which will effectively make the Parks Department whole. And that's, that was what was originally proposed. Kind of the B option that is kind of coming out tonight is build on Site Two, but maintain Site One as a park amenity in some fashion, whether that's trees and landscaping, move a skate park there, additional parking, whatever it may be. In that case, you don't have the proceeds from Sale One, so you have a little bit of a shortfall in the Parks portion to get to the thirty-four million dollar total. And that is, to your point, Councilmember Dovey, the much smaller amount that would have to, we'd have to figure out how to come up with.
But it's not a million dollars a year.
No, no, no. It's, it would probably be three to four million total spread over twenty years. So it's going to be back at the napkin math, one hundred and fifty a year. Probably a little more than that.
All right, there's been, there was a motion which was seconded. Then there was a, an amendment, a, a motion to amend which was seconded. So now we are on the motion to amend, which was to continue this to the next city council meeting on the nineteenth. So is there any further discussion on this issue before we vote? All right. All those in favor of continuing this to the next city council meeting?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? All right. That's done. All right, now, we are.
Your initial motion is just negated.
That goes, that's negated at this point. Thank you very much. All right, council reports. It's the first meeting of the month, so we'll start with Councilmember Sepadossen.
Thank you, Mayor. At the AWC conference, there's some very interesting things that I attended. And one of them was the effective pairing of mental health professionals with first, first respondents to calls. And so there's East Side Fire Rescue, Bellevue Fire Cares, Redmond, and then there's also a South Side. The South Side did not present at this workshop, but I think it'd be, I'd be very curious to hear what they are doing because it includes the fire departments as well as police, mental health professionals and all the other professionals. A lot of times when we're talking about going to these calls, we talk, we're trying to pair mental health services with police, but I think involving fire also is a, a great way of doing this. But I did not hear, or they were not there to talk about what's happening in the South End. But I think that's something I wasn't aware of and curious to learn more about. And then the missing metal was another topic that came up again at this conference. I also went on a tour, but it was the homeless camps. And one was where they had about twenty tiny houses and they're fully staffed twenty-four, seven where people experiencing homelessness or who don't have homes cannot even be within distance from that site. And that site is well-maintained, staffed. Residents there do have access to services and resources. And it's well-run, well-maintained. And I think Vancouver is really on to something because they are trying to support their homeless population as well as provide services and support to move them to permanent housing. And, and I think that also was a very interesting tour that I went on and I really appreciated what they're doing because everybody's dealing with the same issue around, you know, homelessness and mental health and addiction problems. And so this is one way that they're doing it. And I think if possible, if we could explore that, I would really appreciate it. And so that's what I, those are some of the things that I attended and appreciated from this conference. And yeah, I think with that, last night's July fourth event was again amazing. I really enjoyed it, brought friends and they had a wonderful time. Even the little kids, they were still jumping around and running and enjoying it. So I just want to say thank you for, to the Parks Department and also the police. I felt very safe, especially hearing about what happened that morning near Chicago. I was really a little concerned. And I was, and I saw a lot of officers walking around, which really made me feel safe. But you have no control over those situations. And so I'm really thankful that things went smoothly. And yeah, thank you for having such a great event and I'm glad it wasn't canceled.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Norton?
Thank you. All right, I'd like to say congratulations to the Parks Department for putting on such an amazing event. And thank you to the Police Department for the safety that I felt when I got there and the whole time I was there, I, I felt really comfortable. And it was, it was great. I've lived here for twelve years and I've never gone to any events in this city because that's all I do is work. So this has been really, really nice to see what the city's done and, and the police presence was, there were a lot of police and I did not feel uncomfortable. Not one second. It was just, it was just a really nice community feeling there. I also wanted to say thank you to the city for the Juneteenth celebration that was held. I really appreciate it. It's something that is not really known about around here. And, and I just think it's, it was wonderful that we did that. So that was greatly appreciated. And I also want to give a shout out to Evan Cook. I've been putting on monthly meetings on my own, addressing community violence and youth issues that we have here. And a few community members, one of them's in the audience. Thank you, Anna Patrick, for always being there and being supportive. Come every first Thursday of the month and everyone's invited to come, but what we're doing, and this doesn't have anything to do with the city council. This is something I've been doing on my own. I rented some space for two years. I signed a two-year lease and I paid for it. And I've been encouraging people from the community to take the meeting over because I don't think this should be run by any politician. And I, I want to attend, but I don't want to be in charge of it. And so Evan Cook has stepped up and he will be chairing the meeting. And he has changed the name of the group. And I think it's wonderful. It's way better than anything I ever came up with. And it's, it's called the, the Community Violence Prevention Meeting. It's going to be held the first Thursday of every month at the Pyramid Mason Lodge from six PM to eight PM. And I'll be there obviously because I have the key and the alarm code. But you're invited to attend this Thursday from six to eight and the first Thursday of every month from six to eight. I'm looking forward to see what Evan will be doing. He is also, he's representing Multi-Service Center as well. And we're trying to get other community groups to start attending and working with the youth in federal ways. So I'm really excited about it. I, I'm mostly excited about stepping back and not being in charge because I, I want the community to do this. I'll, I'll pay for it. I just don't want to do it. So again, thanks Evan and everybody who's been there, helping out and with your ideas and your support is, is just been awesome. That's it.
Great, thanks Erica. Councilmember Norton?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say sorry, John. I, I missed your red and white, blue event. I spent the holiday with my family in, in Portland, so I'm sorry.
We'll be back next year for you.
Okay. I, I'll try. And I also want to say thank the mayor and council president and deputy mayor and the rest of the council member for accommodating my travel schedule. I always thinking about you when I'm traveling.
And we're thinking about you too.
Exactly. That's right.
That's the truth.
Wherever the world is long tonight.
Exactly. That's right.
Well, with that, I'm going to end my report.
Very good. Okay. Councilmember Walsh?
I also, a big shout out to the Parks Department and the Police Department for the great event yesterday. It was wonderful and I, you know, ditto's to the things that have been said already. Also to our fellow council members here. I think it is great that we can, you know, we agree on. we agree on a lot of things, we disagree on a few things, but we get along regardless, and we respect each other regardless. And, and it's interesting that, that the, that the lines that we, that, that there's not certain fixed lines or coalitions of the things that we agree and disagree on. I mean, it's, 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 it's very fluid, and, and I think that that's good. I think that that's good.
Yeah.
And so anyway, and so, so thank you to, to my fellow council members, and thank you for the, to the people in the community that, that, you know, the stalwarts that are out here every, every meeting. So anyway, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Dora?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple things I wanted to note. I was out of business, a hotel, actually, and I asked how things were going, and they said, well, not so good. But Officer Smith, and I don't know his first name, is a great guy. He comes here whenever we need him. So Officer Smith, I don't know who you are, but you've got great fans out there in downtown Federal Way. And then I was driving to breakfast. I go to a breakfast every Friday morning with people who've been doing it for seventeen years. And I drove by down ninety-nine, and there's a fire truck and ten police cars, and I see our chief standing there and a bunch of officers, and I'm going, man, we got the biggest event ever going in Federal Way, what happened? And all the way to breakfast, I'm waiting for the text that says, hey, we had a major catastrophe. So I asked the chief, and he said, yeah, we had this deal where all the police officers got together, and they went shopping and got food, and whoever won, and they gave it all to the multi-service center. So, and the Federal Way officers won the contest, so Kent was here, I think, and Federal Way and the Fire Department. So a great shout out for what I thought was a major issue turned out to be a great fundraiser donation to the people who need food in the multi-service center. So I don't know if anybody knew about it. I was surprised, but it's a great deal. I wanted to mention, on the consent agenda, we gave a grant to the barbershop quartet, which is great. But one of those members, Dr. Burbage, my old dentist, who retired unfortunately, is at an international barber shop quartet singing contest back east. So we have something to look forward to that came out of lodging tax, and we're going to have some of the best barbershop people here when that happens. So thanks for getting that grant to them. And then I guess, lastly, I would say, at the red, white, and blue festival, besides all the fun and all the great things, I had a great time talking to Tim Burns and Bud Bronson, just about things that are going in Federal Way. Totally two different guys that have been here forever, and they had great insights. So besides the fireworks and all the music, it was great. I think the connectivity between residents, new and old, in Federal Way was really the sweet spot of that whole department and everything. So I wanted to thank the Park Department and the city for doing that. So that's my report, and look forward to having our next meetings.
Very good, thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. So the Kiwanis Salmon Bake, sixty-six years, is July twenty-second at Steel Lake Park. From four to eight, tickets are twenty-eight dollars, unless you're a senior, sixty-five and older, and then it's twenty-five dollars. And if you actually look at Facebook, at our Facebook page, yes, we do have hot dogs. There was someone who thought we needed to offer an alternative meal. We have offered hot dogs for children and whoever wants one for years and years, and it doesn't cost twenty-eight dollars for a hot dog. So yes, we do offer that. Cafe Pacific Catering is, once again, doing the cooking for us, and we'll have live entertainment and a beer garden, so we really encourage you to come. We are selling a lot of tickets, and people are really anxious to get back to those things that we did before the pandemic. So it, it's pretty exciting. Anyway, four to eight at Steel Lake, rain or shine. And I can tell you, the year that I was co-chairman of the Salmon Bake a few years ago, it drizzled all day until three forty-five, and then the sun came out, and it was beautiful. So it has not rained for a very, very long time. I can't even remember, on the Salmon Bake. So please come, and I have tickets today with me.
Very good, very good.
Coffee with a cop?
Along with the salmon, there'll be some good ice cream.
Yes. Sub-zero ice cream. I didn't know if I could say that, but come, has been coming for the last few years, and they have a long line. So you can buy awesome dessert, and, which is really great. And our Boy Scout that was here today for the youth commission, his troop three oh seven and PAC three oh seven come and help us, too. So it's really a community event. Coffee with a Cop was last Wednesday, which was the first one since the pandemic, and that was really cool. At first, when I first got there, I thought, oh, where are the people? But then the people came. And thank you for the officers who were there, and to Chief for the leadership, we really appreciated it. I'd like to thank all those folks who applied for the commissions and the interviews we did today. I would also like to say that we still have commission openings. So if you're interested, please contact one of us and, and talk to us, or go on the city's webpage, and you can see what's open, especially for youth. We really need some more youth commissioners. Yes, we need, oh, seven, eight more youth commissioners. So please, please, please think about serving your city as a youth commissioner. And I also just wanted to remind people, because we, we, someone will always ask this question. In August, we only have one council meeting. I know it's already been brought up, and we're going to bring it up again, but it's the second Tuesday of the month. It's August ninth, six thirty, same time, same place, except a different Tuesday. And that's to allow council to attend National Night Out, which is the first Tuesday of the month. So hopefully, we'll be in your neighborhood, visiting you on National Night Out, and then you can come visit us on August ninth at six thirty.
Very good, thank you very much. Council President?
Well, Susan stole my thunder. It's okay. So just to reiterate, still, thank you very much, Councilmember Dovey, for buying forty tickets from Kiwanis Salmon Bake. So he's going to get them to some people that need them. We, we didn't print enough tickets, so if you have any leftover, I need them, lady.
Not my fault. You can go online, and you can buy tickets to online.
I hear that. Okay, so I want to say thank you to Northlake, who had their, because this is sixty-sixth annual Kiwanis Salmon Bake, but we had the Northlake Parade that was the seventy-first annual Northlake Parade. I think it was the first parade in this community. So very, very, very wonderful people around Northlake and Warehouser, very accommodating. And so thank you again to the Parks, can't tell the Parks and the police, thank you enough for, for the work for, on the Fourth of July. It was absolutely a wonderful event, particularly after you're watching the news from what had happened in Chicago. It's a wonderful event. Thank you.
All right, great work, everyone, great discussions. Thank you so much for your partnership and, and working with you. Yeah, we are adjourned.